Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. My name is Carrie Murphy and I am the Deputy Chief of Staff for Communications. Thanks for coming on a hot morning. What we have planned today is a PowerPoint presentation. It'll probably take about thirty-five, forty minutes. And then the mayor will open it up for your comments, questions, and she may have a few questions for you, too. When we get to that part of the program, Troy Anderson, right here, will be the manager of the microphone. So if you have something that you want to contribute, just let Troy know and he'll come your way. We are asking that everyone who wants to share something, just limit your comments or your questions to one, if you would, so that everybody has an opportunity to participate if they wish to do so. And then at the end, if we have some extra time, we can do that. And if you have a question that hasn't been answered, we have enough staff here to stay afterward that can help you with that.
Thank you, Carrie. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Several people have asked me with the last two town halls we have why we're doing such odd times. So thank you for being here at 11:00 a.m. in the morning. But this came at a request of people that like to attend our town hall meetings. I've done forty-two town hall meetings in the evening so far. And people are saying, could you do some in the morning? And can you do some late afternoon? Because I work in the evening. So that's why we kind of vary the times we're having this. This isn't the South Omaha Town Hall meeting. It's just a town hall meeting held in South Omaha. We are doing four about the roads and we're just trying to spread them out all over the city. So hopefully, one time that we're having it will fill the needs of everybody. So I just wanted to let you know that. So today, before I get going, I would like to introduce just a few people because I want to answer all your questions today. And if I can't answer them, I have enough people here that can help me answer them. So our Public Works Director, Bob Stube, raise hands. He's in the back. Of course, road repair and maintenance is under the Public Works Department. Our City Engineer, Todd Fitzer, is here. He's in the back. He's waving his hand right now. Austin Rousher, who is our Street Maintenance Engineer, is right up here in front. Dave Fanslaw is our Planning Director. He is in the back. Steven Curtis, our Finance Director, he is sitting down in the crowd. Steve Jensen is a former City Planning Director. He's in the back of the room. We met Troy Anderson. I also Kevin Anderson. Both Troy and Kevin are Deputy Chief of Staff in my office. You met Carrie Murphy along with that, a few other women that work in my office. Terry Blackburn is here. Terry, wave your hand. Chelsea Andrews, Cynthia Kennedy, and Susan Aguilera Robles. I get those twisted a lot. But they are all my staff that work in my office. So these town halls, we decided to do them to give me the opportunity to explain to you the scope of the road fixes that we need in Omaha and then to receive your feedback. I want to make sure I let you know there is no plan developed yet. We need to develop a plan. We need to develop a plan for a long-range pavement maintenance program in the City of Omaha. We've never had one before. So what I want to do is give you a lot of information to explain to you why we are the way we are, why the roads look the way that they do, what the problem is, what we have done about it since I've been mayor, what is needed to be done to improve our roads, revenue options, and then just get your feedback on them. So again, we have not devised a plan. We want to talk about a plan and we want to get your input to help us develop that plan. One of the things I do want to mention, this meeting is not about an individual pothole in front of your house or your own street or individual issues. This is just about the broad scope of the road surfaces throughout the city. If you do have an individual problem or question or pothole that you want to talk about, we've got plenty of staff that can do it after our presentation today. But we really want to keep this focused on the broad problem that we have and talk about it and give you a lot of information. So our work in Omaha is based on my four goals. And those are number one, public safety; number two is managing the city budget; three, jobs economic development; and four is improving the taxpayer experience. So I'm going to talk briefly about all four of those. First and foremost, public safety is my number-one responsibility. It's keeping the citizens of Omaha safe. When you look at public safety in the City of Omaha, we have had a lot of activity and a lot of very positive results. For example, we've added over a hundred police officers in the last six years. We are opening up a fifth police precinct out west this September. We've expanded our gang unit. We have had a lot of activity within the Omaha Police and Fire Department. Now, I can tell you all those things we've done, but you want results. And this slide really shows you the results as far as public safety. Crime is down in the City of Omaha. We use seven indexes to evaluate crime. All seven are down. In fact, in 2018, homicides were down twenty-seven percent. Last year, in eighteen, we had twenty-two homicides for the entire year. To put that in perspective, in 2015, we had fifty. We went from fifty to twenty-two in just a few years. So we really have seen results so far this year. Knock on wood, we're in July, but we've had nine so far this year. So we've seen great advances and great successes in public safety. Next, managing the city budget. We are very fiscally sound as far as our budget goes. When I became mayor in 2013, that 2013 budget was estimated to be about thirteen million in the hole by the end of the year. The 2014 budget, which I just had a few months to get together, it usually takes us about ten months to do a city budget. It was predicted to be about twenty million dollars short, and we have really turned that around. We really wanted to show that we could run the City of Omaha and all our departments very, very efficiently. We could improve on your city services, and yet we could do it with a lower tax levy rate, which we have done. All of those deficits, we have turned into surpluses. We've had a surplus at the end of every budget that I have done. And let me just tell you, that's not easy. We do the budget, it takes us about ten months to do it. The City Council approves it in August, which they will this year. They'll approve 2020. It will go into effect January first of 2020, and it is balanced to the penny. And for those who want to look at it, my budget, my capital improvement plan, and the city checkbook are all posted online. You could follow every single penny. But by the end of the year, December 31st, that budget has to be balanced to the penny. And that's my responsibility to make it so that it happens. So we do do a quarterly report to the citizens every year to let them know where all the departments are with the budget. But those surpluses, I want to explain them because people ask me all the time, wow, you got all that extra money. What are you going to do with it? And it really isn't extra money that's just sitting there in a pot. For instance, if I have a surplus in the 2018 budget, I cannot use it in the 2019 budget. I can only use it in the 2020 budget. And that's determined by our city charter, which is like our constitution. So the surplus I had in eighteen, when we started developing the 2020 budget, we take an estimate of all our revenues, sales tax, property tax, occupation taxes, and the surplus. And we basically put it in a pot and fund the entire city department budgets. So every penny of that surplus is used, but it's used in a budget two years down the line. But our budget has been under control. And we have lowered the tax levy twice. I'm going to talk a little bit more about where your tax dollars go in a minute. Job growth and economic development, our unemployment rate in Omaha is very low. It's 2.9% now. United States unemployment rate is about 3.6. So right now in Omaha, we are very much below what the national average is for unemployment. So otherwise, if you want a job, there's jobs for you in Omaha. Another way I evaluate growth is by the number of building permits that we issue because the data is there. Some people are telling me nothing's ever happened in Omaha, and I'm here to tell you there is. Since 2013, and that's when I was elected mayor, we have issued 283,000-plus building permits. That is a value of about $4.9 billion. So you could see there's a lot of investment, a lot of growth, a lot of development that is going on in Omaha, and it continues to go on. That fourth priority that I had, improving the taxpayer experience, we've made a lot of improvements. Examples of those, we redesigned all of our websites. They all look alike. They're easy to use. They are easy to ask questions on. Each department has one. We also have developed some new ones. We have CityOfOmaha.org now, Keep Omaha Moving, where you can find out about street projects. We have Wasteline.org. You could find out a lot about trash pickup. We have expanded our use of social media. We use Facebook. We use Twitter. We use Instagram to get people current information. We added options for the mayor's hotline. You don't even, you don't have to necessarily just call anymore, but there is OmahaHotline.com so you could email your questions in, too. We are developing a new mobile app so people can use it to do anything from to report a pothole, to express a concern about a neighborhood or an abandoned car, or even perhaps in the future, where to go to vote. So we are really working on developing that mobile app now. And as I mentioned, the city's checkbook is online. We have a Park Omaha app now for the parking meters. And our Planning Department, right now, almost the majority of plan review and permits and inspections are all online now. So we try to run the city much more efficiently than we have before to provide better customer service. Part of customer service is the condition of our roads, and that's why we're here today. We have prioritized resurfacing, our resurfacing budget and our spending. Since I have been mayor, we have resurfaced about 738 lane miles a road in Omaha. That would take you, to put it in perspective, that would get you from Omaha to Waco, Texas. We resurfaced that many roads since 2013. However, we have 5,000 lane miles a road. So although we have prioritized it and we're putting more and more money in, we're not even close to where we should be if we really want a pavement maintenance program. So that's what we're going to talk about today. In the past, the last six years, we've worked a lot with our Finance Department and our Public Works Department to add more and more money to the budget every year for road resurfacing and repair. But now we decided to take a really deep dive. And so for about the last two years, we have been working with other outside experts such as HDR, Lampard Nielsen, Olson Associates, Benish, to really study the condition of our roads, what we need to be spending, and how we can fix the problem that we have. So the objectives today are to talk about the problem. The problem is road maintenance, repair, and rehabilitation, what we've done about it from 2013 to present, what is needed to improve maintenance and repair, the revenue needs and options, and next step. And I want to tell you right now, again, I don't have a plan developed. But in the end, I think you will understand why I'm going to talk about some options for additional funding, and then I want your feedback on it. So our existing roads are aging. We know that. We know there have been underfunded for about the last fifty years. This just didn't happen this year or in the last six years. This problem has been in the making for decades right now. The potholes are a symptom. They are not the issue, and they are a result of aging infrastructure. And we are not alone. This is a nationwide problem. So we know that for sure. We here in Omaha, we need to meet the fundamental needs of the citizens and the businesses. We've got to get you from point A to point B without destroying your car and without having a decent road to drive on or bike on or ride your scooter on or whatever. We have more needs than we have money. At the current rate of funding that we have, we won't catch up. I mean, we're trying and trying to resurface more and more each year, but we're not doing the number of lane miles we should be doing, and we end up kind of chasing our tails. So to do this, we need more revenue. And I want to point out, too, there are restrictions on the, for street maintenance, on the funding sources that we can use. So for example, transportation bonds, and those are in our capital improvement plan, those are for major road projects, they can't be used on street maintenance to fill potholes. Another example, I hear this all the time from people, you're using $50 million down in downtown to redo ninety acres of city-owned property, Gene Leahy Mall, Heartland of America Park, Lewis &amp; Clark Landing, the bridge. Why are you wasting 50 million? You can use that on potholes. I hear that constantly. And let me say this, we're putting in 50, the city, we're getting 250 million back in private dollars. We wouldn't get the private dollars if the city wasn't a partner. And I think any investor would agree that if you put $50 in and you get 250 back, it's a pretty good investment. But that $50 million that we are putting in is done with lease purchase bonds. Lease purchase bonds cannot be used for potholes. So when people say you could use that 50 million for potholes, we can't. Those funds are restricted. So give you some definitions and examples about road maintenance and rehabilitation, what we're talking about. Road maintenance means pothole repair and cracked ceiling. Rehabilitation is more of concrete panel repair and to mill and overlay our roads. There's a difference. And I want to give you some examples of construction, reconstruction, and capital improvements that we do because we do several different types. So for example, sometimes we are working to increase street network capacity. We add lanes and we add strength to the roads. Some examples of that are 156th Street, Pepperwood to Corby, 168th Street, the big project we did from Dodge to Maple, and then 42nd Street and Q Street intersection. Those are examples of increasing street network capacity, and we do a lot of work that way. Another area that we do a lot of work on is replacing a rehabilitating pavement that has reached the end of its useful life. So examples of that are Crown Point from 72nd to Blair High Road and 11th and Jones. That's the Brick Street downtown, which we call the worst street in Omaha because it definitely is. And that work is starting in 2020 to redo that Brick Street. Another example is to enhance safety and functionality of the streets. Great example of that, if you drive around town, 132nd and Center Street, that huge intersection, and then north and south on 132nd and east and west on Center Street. That is a safety issue in a safety project. That project should be done by the end of the year, and that's being paid 90% with federal dollars, only 10% local money because it is a safety project. So that's an example of enhancing safety. And another area is to facilitate redevelopment and economic growth. We sometimes will build additional roads or help developers with roads as they do their developments. An example of that is Harney Street from 8th to 10th. That goes along with the Conagra Campus redevelopment. And Indiana Street from 11th to 13th in the Millworth Commons development, that we're building a new street in that area. So those are just some examples and definitions of the things that we are doing as far as reconstruction and capital improvement. But we must maintain a balanced approach. Maintenance, in 2019, we spent about $41 million on street maintenance. That is, again, pothole repair, cracked ceiling, concrete panel repair, mill and overlay. And with our construction and capital, we had in the 2019 budget, we have about $66 million we're spending on roads. But those are those bigger, major street projects that we pay for with bond money. And you can't, again, pay for street maintenance with those bond dollars because anything in the capital improvement plan has to have about a 15-year lifespan. And as we all know, those potholes, we could fill them in March, and in June, they might be popping out again. So we really want to talk about the problem we have with the potholes. The capital improvement plan, I mentioned, it's a six-year plan. We do it along with the budget. It's how we use our bond dollars and how we schedule the use and the issuance of those bond dollars. There is five kinds of bonds that go into the CIP, and you vote to approve them. We put them out about every four years to a vote of the people. And there are transportation bonds, those are street bonds. There are public safety bonds. Public safety bonds, we will do things like build a new fire station, buy fire trucks with those. Parks and Rec bonds, public facility bonds, that is when we build, we could build new facilities with that, public facilities. Environmental bonds, those are sewer bonds, and then the federal funds. That is what's in our capital improvement plan. Six-year plan, every year, we add additional year at the end of it. So we'll have 2020 to 2025. The only year, though, that is fully funded is the year we're in. The out year is, it's a plan, and we do amend it and we do make changes. So it's just the year we're in that is truly fully funded. Where do we get our revenue sources for our roads besides the bonds? From basically three different sources. The CIP, which I just talked about, is on the bottom. And in 2019 alone, there's $66 million for road work in the City of Omaha. We also get money from federal government, from the federal gas tax. We get money from the state. It's called Street and Highway Allocation Fund. That's with the state gas tax. That's every time you fill your car up, you pay a tax that goes to the state. We get a portion of it. But the portion we get, it's very, very complicated, and I'm going to show you that in a minute. And then locally, we have the wheel tax. And we've talked about the wheel tax many, many times, but the wheel tax, an average basic wheel tax for our car is $50 a year. All of this money, all the state gas tax money, all the wheel tax money has to and must be spent on roads and road-related expenses. It cannot be spent on anything else. And that's where all the money goes. The state formula, however, the gas tax, because I've had many people say, well, why can't you just get more money from the state? Because the majority of this gas tax comes from Omaha, that it goes to the rest of the state. Well, here's the financing of the state gas tax. And as you can see, it is quite complicated. Don't ask me to explain it because I have trouble explaining it, too. But this is the formula, and you could see how complex and difficult it is with the state to try to get more money from the state from the gas tax. So I just wanted to show you that. It's very confusing. Some people have said to me, too, that the wheel tax, why don't you get rid of it? They're saying that was only meant to be temporary. They remembered when it was passed and it was meant to be temporary. But I will tell you, number one, to get rid of it, that will result in about $23 million less a year for your roads because every bit of the revenue goes to the roads. And also, it was passed in 1917. That's when it first was passed. So it was never meant to be temporary. It's been in place over a hundred years now. And the first time they passed it, it was a dollar. And then it grew to $2. And then as the years went on, different mayors and city councils have increased it to what it is today, which is $50 for an average car. This is a good slide, too, because another thing I get asked all the time is, I pay so much property taxes. What are you doing with all my tax dollars, mayor? What are you doing with it? And I think this slide is very clear, and it shows for every dollar of property taxes you pay, 61.5% goes to the schools. That's where, that's where the majority of your property tax goes. On the end, 21.3, I always say around 22%, that goes to the City of Omaha. That is the sliver of the property tax you pay. 22% goes to the city. 12.5% goes to Douglas County, and the rest are the other taxing entities that are listed on your property tax, such as city-county building, Metro Transit, NRD, et cetera. So with the city's 22% of your property tax bill, that pays for the fire department, the police department, the libraries, your trash pickup, Public Works, Planning Department, HR Department, Law Department, all of those city departments are paid with the 22% sliver that we get of your property tax. So that's where your property tax goes. Here's another slide that gives you just a little bit more explanation on that. If you had a $100,000 home, like I said, about 62% goes to education. If you had a $100,000 home, you can see actually the value down there. Your total tax bill would be about $2,248, and $1,300 goes to education. Only $479 would go to the City of Omaha. And again, that pays for all the city departments. The City of Omaha's tax levy, then, is, here's the history of it since 2002. From 2002 to '09, that was during the Fahey administration, it remained flat, no changes, not up, not down. 2010 and '11, quite a hike. That was during the Suttl administration. And 2015 and 2017, that's since I've been mayor, and we had two levy decreases. So that just gives you the history since 2002. What have we done to fix the streets? We've made it a priority. And this is a good example. In 2010, I was on the City Council then. We had in the city budget $2.8 million for road resurfacing for the entire year. That's all 5,000 lanes. $2.8 million. This year, in 2019, we had $12.2 million. You could see I've gradually increased it every year to put more and more money into street resurfacing. Was it '17 or '18 that we had the extra five? In 2017, with some, we found an accounting error, actually, and we found that we counted some dollars twice. So in the Public Works Department, so we had an additional $5 million. We went ahead and put that right into roads. So that year, we did about $18 million in '17 of roads resurfacing. So we've really tried to make it a big priority. However, what we have been doing as far as pothole repair is just this. And people say all the time, this is just a Band-Aid solution. Why don't you resurface the roads? It is a Band-Aid solution. But that is the only choice we really have, number one, with the money that we have, the revenue that we have. And number two, it's immediate. We can go out there, if bad weather and a pothole appears, it's going to tear your car up. We can fill that pothole with asphalt, and it smooths out the road until we have enough money to resurface. But it definitely is a Band-Aid approach. We know that. In 2019 alone, and this is what's really important as we go on with this conversation today, we spent already this year $13.25 million on pothole repair. We have used 9,437 tons of asphalt in pothole repair, and that is the equivalent of about 67,000 potholes that we have filled just this year. And we really started filling them in March. We fill potholes 12 months of the year. People ask me, well, you should be done filling the potholes now. We do it all year, every year. They will pop out sometimes with a heavy rain. But this just goes to show you, this is a short-term Band-Aid fix. What we really need is a long-term street maintenance program because if we had one, those annual costs would go drastically down. I would much rather spend that $13 million on resurfacing, but we had to use it to fill potholes because of the type of winter that we had. And just to give you another example, snow and ice removal. That comes out of our street budget, that the money that we pay for, the money that we get from the gas tax and the wheel tax, that goes to snow and ice removal, too. That's part of street-related expenses. And already this year, we spent $7.5 million on snow and ice. We budgeted $8.3 for the entire year. So we've almost used up our entire budget, and we still have till December 31st. So you can see what a bad winter we had. And we are not alone. It's happened all over the Midwest. Everybody that had this harsh winter, this is what happened to our roads. Again, we have about 5,000 lane miles a road to maintain. Of that, there is about 300 lane miles of unimproved streets. We know that. Recommended standard, and this is very important, and this comes from our experts, the recommended standard is, is that we should be spending about $75 million annually on street maintenance and rehab. And where we get that $75 million figure is the value of our total surface infrastructure to resurface it is about $1.5 billion. If you take 5% of that, that comes to $75 million a year. So we should be spending 5% of our total value annually to resurface our streets, and that comes to about $75 million. That's what the experts are telling us. The challenge is, is we are budgeting and spending now, because this is all the revenue we have, about $41 million. So we have a $34 million gap of what we are spending and what we should be spending. And we are spending that $34 million because we don't have the funds to spend $75 million. If we had the $75 million and we're doing that much road resurfacing, that would mean we could do about 250 lane miles of road resurfacing every year with the $75 million. We are doing 125. If we did 250, that would mean that in a 20-year period, which is an average lifespan of a street, we would have resurfaced that street once every 20 years. And that's the average lifespan. Now, of course, some concrete could last 100 years, some asphalt can last 40 years. But that's an average lifespan. So then you create a street and pavement maintenance program, and it would be ongoing. So we would never get to the point that we are now, that streets are in such bad shape you can't even fill a pothole. They're down to dirt. That would mean that we would have enough to do 250 lane miles a year and do it, continue doing it for 20 years, and then we would continue doing it, go back and resurface that street again before it starts to deteriorate. That's what a street pavement maintenance program is about. And another good thing about having more ability to do these jobs, some of them are smaller. Some of them are concrete panel repair. It really opens up the opportunity for a lot of small businesses and construction businesses to have more work because there will be more work. Unimproved streets, I mentioned that. We have about 300 lane miles in the City of Omaha of unimproved streets. These are streets that were built decades ago. I wish we could rewrite history, but we can't. They are not up to today's standards. They are asphalt streets that have deteriorated beyond repair. And like I said, that's about 300 lane miles of our 5,000. It would cost us about $325 million to take all of those 300 lane miles of unimproved streets and get them up to today's standards. So again, that's $325 million. That's very, very expensive. That's a lot of money. However, what we have done just within the past couple of years is we have developed a new cost-share policy. And here's what it has been like forever in the history of Omaha, and it's still the same way in Douglas County. If you have one of those unimproved streets in front of your house and you want it improved to today's standards, you want it concrete with storm drains and sewers and gutters, et cetera, then we would come out and engineer it, give you an estimate, and the homeowners along that street would pay for it. And it used to be you had 20 years to pay for it. So what we did just within the past couple of years is we got council to approve a new policy, and it's a cost-sharing policy. And what it is, is we will come out, engineer it, give you an estimate. We will pay half if it's concrete, and we will pay 25% if it is asphalt. And another thing we did is we got the state law changed last year to change that payback period from the 10 years that it was to 20 years.[1799.23] So it's all an attempt to make it more affordable to that homeowner that lives along those streets. I know a lot of people, and I do, too, in some areas. I have, I still, it's hard to explain and it's hard to understand because a lot of people will say, "Well, that's a public street. You should pay 100% of it." This is something that we're doing to try to help out. We're paying for half of it now. But the bottom line is, we don't have the dollars to pay for all of these, to resurface them and get them up to today's standards. The cost-share policy hopefully will help. Annexation, people bring that up to me a lot. "Why do you keep on annexing when you can't take care of the streets you have?" I hear that a lot. And we have goals for our annexation policy. I believe in a very aggressive annexation policy. But before we annex, it's very strategic, and we spend a lot of time on these areas. We know the lane miles of road. We know the acres of park. We know everything about that area. And when we annex, we not only assume their liabilities and their debt, we assume all of their assets. And the annexations that we have done have been very, very good and healthy for the city. We assume their property taxes, their sales tax, their occupation taxes. Almost all of the SIDs that we have annexed have seen their property taxes drop. And it just, and it causes, or gives us the ability for the city to keep on growing. We meet with the bond raters every fall to determine our bond rate. That's one area that they always give the City of Omaha kudos for, is we continue to grow and broaden our tax base. Where many cities across the country are declining in population, we continue to grow because of the annexation. But an example of the annexation we did this year, the city council just approved it. It brought in 14 lane miles. That's all the additional lane miles of road it brought in. And all of those roads are today's standards. So it's not that, yes, we do assume the responsibility to plow snow out there, but the revenue that comes in is good for the entire city. And that's why we've been able to do a lot more than we've done in the past, is because of the annexations. So how do we fix it? I've said before, with the current revenue streams, we cannot catch up. We're really chasing our tails. Additional revenue would allow us for a long-term road maintenance and rehabilitation program. So it would be ongoing, like I said. Once every 20 years, every street's going to get resurfaced. And then you do it again, and you do it again. And you don't get into the problem that we have now. And I already mentioned, we should, but I'll mention it again because it's important. Right now, we're resurfacing 125 lane miles a year. It should be 250. If we did the 250, then we could touch them once every 20 years. People ask me a lot, too, "Why don't you use concrete everywhere? Don't use asphalt. Asphalt wears out quicker than concrete." And yes, it does. But the average one lane mile of asphalt costs $155,000. One lane mile of concrete, $1.5 million. Concrete is 10 times higher costly than asphalt. So that's why that roads that have always been asphalt, if we can resurface them, like with a three-inch asphalt overlay, we'll get a lot more years out of it. We give homeowners the option to do that and not say, "We demand that everything's changed to concrete" just because of that cost. So how do we close that gap? We should be spending 75. We're spending 41 million. We have a $34 million gap. And again, we've tried to really prioritize road maintenance and resurfacing. We have. But we are spending so much on pothole repair every year. And I'll tell you, if we have another winter, like we had last winter, we're going to be doing this all over again next spring. And every year, the roads get a year older. So what we have calculated is a couple of things that we just wanted to present to you. There are no plans. Nothing has been decided. But I just want to throw some things out to you and get your input on it. So one of the first things I wanted to throw out is a possibility, is a bond issue. The reason I like a bond issue is it goes to the people for a vote. I don't do it on my own. The council doesn't do it. Put it out for a vote. If you say yes, it passes. If you say no, it doesn't. A bond issue, I gave you five, or three different types of bond issues or values. But if you go to the bottom one, a $200 million bond issue, five-year issuance, that would bring in $40 million additional annually. That would close the gap. And have some additional dollars to use on our roads, because these would be transportation bonds. That would require to pay the debt about a 3-cent mil levy increase. And it would cost the owner of a $100,000 home about $35 a year more. That's what it would cost you. If we would do a $150 million bond, it would bring in about $30 million annually. That doesn't quite fill the gap. But that would cost an average homeowner $26 a year. And then a $75 million bond would bring in $15 million a year. That wouldn't, that's only half of what we need. And the average homeowner would pay about $13 a year. Again, the reason that I like that is it's voter-approved. And our experts in the finance department have determined that we do this once, and we have this additional funding to pay the bond debt that comes from you. In five years, would we have to do another bond issue? Yes, we would. In five years, does that mean you're going to have to pay another $35 on top of it? No, it doesn't. Because all of these bonds that I've talked about, they kind of go into one pot, the general obligation bonds. And we are always retiring old bonds. We're refinancing bonds. Valuations change, interest rates change. And so according to our experts, there would not be required to have another $35 a year added on top of that one. It would be sustainable. So it would be a one-time hike to pay the bond debt, and then it would be sustainable. And it could go year after year after year. And in five years, you would have the option to approve it again. We would, and I think other cities have done something like this. We would be able to tell you what we're going to do in the first five years, and then we'll get it done. Other cities have done other things, like raised sales tax. Lincoln has just done that. They have raised a, yeah. They have raised their wheel tax recently. And they've also raised their sales tax to work on their roads. Because their roads are just as bad a shape as ours. So I put the wheel tax up here just for a discussion. I don't like this idea because you don't approve it. The city council can approve a hike in the wheel tax, and you don't have any say about it. But I just wanted to give you an example. Again, the wheel tax was first passed over 100 years ago in 1917 at a dollar. It was never meant to be temporary. Right now, the wheel tax brings in about $23 million a year. That's what we're estimated to bring in in '19. Every bit of that's used on the roads. Basic wheel tax is $50. The last time it was adjusted was in 2011, when it was $35. If we would increase our wheel tax to what Lincoln has, theirs, theirs is $74 a year now for our car, that would increase our revenue to $34.9 million and bring in $11 million more a year. That's $11 million more, but that does not close the gap at all. We need $34 million more. To fill the gap, which is 34, it would require 143% increase in the wheel tax or $122 annually for one car. So that's not one I favor. It's open for discussion. The next, this is complicated. Lincoln just raised their sales tax, a quarter penny, to pay on roads. We have a different story here in Omaha. The City of Omaha is the only city of the metropolitan class in the state of Nebraska. State law says that we are capped, because we're metropolitan class, at 1.5% sales tax for our local option. Your sales tax, when you buy things, you pay 7%. Five and a half goes to the state. One and a half goes to the City of Omaha. We are capped at one and a half. We can't make it go any higher, even if we put it out for a vote. And a sales tax increase would require a vote of the people. But we can't do it. We would have to get state law change. So if we wanted to go that route, we'd have to get state law change. Then we would come back and put it to a vote of the people. So this is out of my control, and there's no guarantee that they would do it. However, there's another problem. Is when, remember that old restaurant tax that was passed in 2010? And the restaurant tax ordinance says, "This tax will sunset if there is an increase in sales tax." That's what it says automatically. So we get right now with our restaurant tax about $33 million a year. So that would sunset and leave a $33 million hole in the budget. So if we would raise the sales tax, that would have to go to fill that hole first. And what is left isn't enough to fill the gap. I know it's very complicated, but that's how it is. A lot of hoops to jump through. Another thing that I'm thinking about, that it would only bring in about $4 million more a year, is there is an occupation tax that was passed in 2013 that is called the tobacco tax. And the council passed it to agree to give the med center $3.5 million a year for 10 years for the cancer center. That will sunset in 2023, and it'll go away. We could ask the city council to take the sunset out because it's already a tax that people pay on tobacco, tobacco products, and take that revenue that's been going to the med center and put it into roads. But it's about $4 million a year. That's a good $4 million, but it's not enough to close the gap. Another thing to consider, but this is out of my control, and there's nothing we can really do to demand it, is to continue working with the state of Nebraska in the legislature on all of the state sales tax exemptions we have. This has been talked about in the legislature for decades. But there are billions of dollars of sales tax exemptions in the city, or in the state of Nebraska. If some of those were reduced or eliminated, the amount of revenue coming into the state, and therefore, the revenue coming into the City of Omaha could grow greatly. In fact, we could probably eliminate the state income tax. We could probably reduce sales tax. But this is something that's out of our control. Things that they've talked about that are sales tax exempt are things like candy, soda, haircuts, manicures, dozens and dozens of others that they have looked and looked at over the years, thinking, "Should we add a sales tax to that and get the more revenue?" But that, again, is out of my hands. That would be up to the state of Nebraska. So we're kind of at the end here. This is what's going on. This is the problem we have. This is why we have a problem. And this is why we're just not keeping up the way we should be because of the present revenue that is coming in. Here's what will happen. I mean, if no additional revenue sources, if you all say, "Absolutely, no. I don't want to pay anymore." No, just figure it out with what you got. We will continue to prioritize infrastructure in our budget. We'll refine our strategy we have for road maintenance and rehabilitation. But those budget increases, year over year, are going to be minimal. And we will not be able to meet our recommended budget for road resurfacing, rehabilitation, and maintenance. We won't be able to reach that. And what will happen is the improvements will just not keep up with the pace of deterioration of our roads. And you have seen that happen. They're getting older and older, and they're falling apart more and more. And we're going to get further and further behind. And that's just the facts. I mean, and I really, this has been talked about, like I said, for a good 50 years. It's been talked about. It's been the main topic in many mayoral elections in the City of Omaha decades ago. I will tell you, the mayor's race in 2001, Dob against Fahey, it was all about potholes. That was in 2001. Remember, for a while, they called Mayor Fahey, Mayor Pothole for a while because they talked about potholes and what he was going to do to come up with some new material and resurface more roads. Well, here we are, you know, 18 years later, and we're still having the same problems. So it happens year after year after year. And again, they're just getting older year after year after year. So next steps, we really want to solicit feedback. Get your opinion. See what you have to say about it. We can do nothing. I'm not recommending one over another. I'm just trying to lay out where we are in the facts. We are going to, this presentation that I'm doing, I give the same information, we're doing four of these. We're doing the same information all over town. We have it videotaped, the first one I did, we videotaped it. It should, the entire presentation should be up online if anybody misses it and wants to see it. We also have already, the videotape should be up by probably next week. The PowerPoint that I just showed you today is already online. So you could go and you can look at it on the city website and on my website. So you could go and look, and look back at some of the numbers that I said. It's available for you to look at and scrutinize. We're going to do polling. We're going to do a lot of outreach to get some feedback. And then with that, we will create what our action plan is for road maintenance and rehabilitation, depending on the revenue that we have, and we'll get to work on it. The outside experts that I told you about that we use besides our public works department, our finance department, we have reached out, and a lot of this information comes from a lot of experts out there. HDR, Lampre Neerson, Olson, and Benish have all helped us put this together. So with that, I see a lot of heads shaking, yes and no. So I want to, I want to open it up for questions. I am going to give the mic to Troy here, and hopefully, my voice is loud enough that you can hear me answer the questions. One thing I do want to bring out, though, before somebody asks this question, is that they always ask me, "Why do you use asphalt or concrete?" Well, that's just, that's the standard now throughout the country. That's about, that's the choices we have. We don't use inferior concrete. We don't use inferior asphalt or cheap stuff. We get it from the same sources that Bellevue does, that Council Bluffs does, that Papillion and La Vista does. They're from reputable companies. It's not a cheap product that we're using. I get people saying, "Well, why don't you develop something new?" We are open and flexible. We are always looking and willing to try anything new that has been developed or created. A friend of mine, who's actually a physician, sent me an email just the other day, and he said he was aware of some material that was, just invented at University of Wisconsin. And it was lightweight, it was impermeable, it repelled water. And why don't you start using this on your roads in Omaha? So the questions I ask, "Is it available for commercial use?" No. "What does it cost per cubic yard?" I don't know. "Is the material accepted and approved by the American Concrete Institute Federal Highway?" No. "Does Wisconsin Department of Roads use it?" No. So I mean, there's ideas, and there's things people are working on, and we're certainly open to that. But a lot of these aren't available for commercial use yet. So we struggle with the concrete like everybody does. My driveway is relatively new, and it's full of cracks. I mean, concrete is known to do one thing, it'll crack. We know that. Our roads in Omaha, there's different standards for highways as opposed to residential, as opposed to the interstate. I think the state standard for the interstate is about 18 inches. Main roads, Bob Stube, in Omaha?
Local roads, I think, are seven, and then majors are nine to 10 inches thick.
Yeah, so seven in your residential area. And did you say nine or 10 on our, like our main roads? So there's different standards. We don't build our roads like the Adaban, I mean, in Germany, that they say, "Well, that was built in the war. Why, that can last, why can't yours?" Well, that was built as a landing strip and for German tanks to drive on. So we, there's a limit to how deep we can put the concrete that'll last. So with that, Troy.
Thank you. And just to provide some context, so we have the room until 12:30. So we're somewhat limited on our time. But I want to ask that we reserve questions, individual questions, one at a time. That way, we can transfer it to as many people as possible. If, for whatever reason, we have some time left over, and we can get back to you if you have additional questions, great. have additional questions, great. But otherwise, we can just limit your questions to one initially, that way we can get to as many people as possible. And with that, I'm going to slide in here.
Make sure you give us your name too, because we're taking notes.
I'm Garrett Earhart, and it's more of a comment than a question, but of course, any feedback's appreciated. Okay. My preference for financing it is sort of a semi-luxury, a common people's luxury tax, which is prepared bakery items, candy, chips, sugary pop, vapors, cigarettes, if you can get any more taxes on cigarettes, because all they do is kill people. And not haircuts, but yes, manicures, people have to get haircuts, everyone has to get manicures and something. So like the luxury items, we all spend a lot of money on junk food, a lot of what some of us do, guilty. And so I think you'd get a whole bunch of money if you did that. I really do think you'd get a lot of money.
Well, thanks for, I appreciate that comment and I, I agree, but again, keep in mind that that is nothing we can do. That, that would be state law. Those things are exempted from sales tax now, and to take away those exemptions, state law would have to change. So that would be up to the legislature. They've talked about this for years and years and years. I remember when Heineman was governor too, he had a plan that was getting a lot of momentum and then they kept on adding things. And then it got to the point that they felt like it was going to hurt business, it was going to hurt those that did manufacturing. I would say the, I would say probably the majority of the sales tax exemptions that we have, no, maybe not the, the majority, but a lot, are coming from agriculture, from the farmers. And you know, to get state law passed, all 49 senators would have to vote, and those senators that represent western Nebraska, it's doubtful that they're going to vote on something to take exemptions away from the farmers, because that's who they represent. So this is complicated, but I, I agree with you.
Everybody wants things.
Yes. I know. That's a problem.
Good afternoon. Thank you Mayor Sotek for coming to our members today. And I ask this question, sorry, my name is Kimora Snijmee. I am president of the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance and also on the Omaha Public School Board. I ask this question out of pure ignorance and the truce sense of the word, because I'm like, this fellow right here, I know nothing about street repair. But oftentimes, it seems like we respond. I was just wondering, is there any way to do more preventative maintenance when it comes to our roads? Thank you.
And that, that's exactly what we're talking about. I mean, preventative maintenance is what we need to be doing instead of just throwing a bunch of asphalt in the potholes. We need to be doing panel repair, panel replacement, and street resurfacing. That's the maintenance part, and that's what we should be doing. But we are spending so much money, like I said, on pothole repair right now, and we have no choice. So the only long-term solution is to resurface or replace panels. And then the big items, which are the major road projects that we do pay for with bond dollars, those, like I said, there's 66 million in the budget. And those are big things that we are doing too. But it's that street maintenance and rehabilitation that we have fallen so far behind. One of the streets I, I mentioned for rehabilitation is Jones Street, that's the, we call the worst street in Omaha, that's Jones downtown, the brick one, you know, ba-ba, ba-ba, ba-ba. It's been that way for years. We're going to start work on that in 2020. But when I became mayor, there was zero dollars in the budget for brick street repair. There was nothing. They weren't doing any brick street repair. And so we, you know, we have added more and more money for that too. But let me, let me make one other point though, that I think is important. If you gave me a billion dollars cash today and said, here, spend this on the roads, this isn't a quick fix either. I would say it is a five or more likely 10-year fix to get to all of these roads. So it's nothing that can happen overnight or by next June, but we still have to deal with the potholes when they happen.
My name is Anita Porus, and I'm just a resident neighbor, but I appreciate coming to this. I have a question regarding the roads that you have estimated, just as far as how many need to be fixed, and if that includes, being that this is a very old part of Omaha, those back alleyways that have residential homes, which most of them now are rentals, in conjunction with businesses that are mixed in, that those, a lot of those back alleys were utilized for crash pickup, and they still be, but they're not paved. They're not, they're dirt, most of them, if not a few might still have concrete in there. Does that include repair in that? Or, or, I'm not sure if maybe you didn't speak about it.
No. Would the, Bob, can you come up here and tell, or Todd, Derek, both of you? I'll need both of you for a lot of these questions. The 5,000 lane miles we are talking about are, are mains and our secondaries and our residential streets that, that people use for cars and bicycles and scooters, they're not the alleys. But we do, we do address the alleys.
Would be considered part of the unimproved roads.
Yeah. Say that loudly.
So, the alleys would be considered part of the unimproved roads. Obviously, the alleys are something that probably has the lowest quantity of traffic on, and a majority of the time, it's probably residential type traffic, a vehicle, a car, or pickup or something like that. It's not a, a street where you have, you know, a blood-wired truck or whatever it might be that's going down. Obviously, the dump truck can go down it because it's servicing the alleyway, but traditionally, it's, it's a low-volume street and therefore it would probably be more considered as an unimproved road than anything.
Other questions?
Hi, my name's Cheryl Kelly, and I'm wondering what we can do to improve the timeliness of repairs, so that the repair can be done to the original problem, not the expanded problem. And I'll give you an example of just three quarters of a block from here on Z Street. In April, a sinkhole opened up. I know at least four reports to the mayor's hotline about it. The last report I made was in June and I was told it would be repaired in just a few weeks. It was finally repaired in the last week, so it took three months. They ended up having to tear out all the way across the street instead of that isolated area of the original sinkhole. And so that possibly is a problem that needs to be addressed when there's something that, you can fix a small problem now rather than a large problem three months ago.
And you know, you, you're really just making our point, is that this year, with 67,000 potholes that we have repaired, I mean, we usually, our, our average turnaround time from when they call our hotline to repair a pothole, I think last spring, where did I was thinking of? There you are. We were at, we were at five, five or six days last year. This year, we were, it was taking us weeks, but we had to prioritize the areas with the most traffic first.
This was not a pothole. This was a sinkhole and you could have lost a car.
Okay, and maybe, I don't know if you guys know about it, like I said, I, this really wasn't to, to address individual areas, but you guys know about that?
Because I'm sure.
Okay, yeah. Do you know about that?
I don't know about that.
So it's probably an M U D hole?
I don't know. The city was aware of it, had barricades around it immediately, and I'm using this as an example, because I'm sure that there were many others that were comparable.
Austin knows about it? Okay. Want to explain?
Sure.
Figured somebody would.
We, we, just the shortest answer in the world, we got very behind this year. The mayor gives numbers about how much money we spent on pothole repair. We were really in an all-hands-on-deck for pothole situation. Because we had a situation there on Z Street where it was barricaded, we had barricades around it to take away some of the safety hazards that would be associated with that. Some of those things tend to, who have gotten put on the back or, we had some contractors that came and helped us out with some of those things. Our typical turnaround time for that barricaded work is less than 10 days, but because we got so far behind, a lot of those extended longer and because they were by barricades and were, were basically safer for the public, those things got extended a little bit longer.
And would the same rate, that sinkhole have been in your case?
Absolutely.
Three months?
We had, we had several around. I, we've, we've had a number of these that come up. We don't consider the area of town, we have five maintenance districts that are spread out around the entire city. Each one of those has their own priorities, they take care of their own district, which is their own region. We don't, we don't shift priorities, we don't tell one area they're more priority than others, so each one manages their own.
And then, again, this is just a point we're trying to make. We got so behind this year, we didn't even really start filling potholes till, I would say, March 18th with hot asphalt. And we got behind, and, and there were just so many everywhere, and we were trying to prioritize them. Remember, we had three construction companies that we hired this year to help us with potholes? We've never done that before. That's why we went millions over budget. But that's what we had to do to try to catch up. We had our guys working seven days a week, 12 hours a day. I got a lot of complaints from our street maintenance guys, they weren't getting, they went right from plowing snow and removing ice to potholes, and they're still out there doing it. So it was a bad winter, but what I don't want to happen, have happened, is another one, just like we did, it could happen again next year, we're going to have the same problem if we don't have a long-range plan to get and really repair these roads and not just patch them up. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Long Robert. First of all, I want to commend you guys, you guys have a task that is not easy to do, especially when you're asking for increased taxes, from a duty to shut tax and anti-erosion benefits. With that said, I would like to ask, what would be the preventative maintenance to have responsible contractor hit on a project like your road or patch holes? Because in the past, it's been, we hired, as a city, we hired contractors that are third-tier setting, and then they're misclassifying workers and they're depending contractor, and it's happened, one of them got hit, and then we're stuck with their bill, because they haven't worked in this company, liability insurance. So I'm not against raising my taxes, I need good roads to conduct business, but I'm also a fair share. If I'm paying my state taxes and federal and employment tax, everybody else will be working for me directly and directly for the city, should also too. There should be some ordinance. We asked the city council, and right now, our agenda's super busy, they haven't been able to meet with us, but I think that's something that we're going to pay, we should be taking standard and a high standard for people who are working for the city, which they're working for me. So I think.
I'm not sure what your, what, what your question is though.
How, how are we going to prevent third-tier or misclassification on employees who are working on potholes?
Okay.
Because right now, we're outsourcing. We're outsourcing, I'm not, I'm not prepared to say that the city of Omaha is doing the right thing. They have unimproved and work in stock, double nine yards with their employees. But when you're outsourcing, which I know two of them are outsourcing, and it's misclassifying their employees, they're saying, well, I'm hiring this guy, he's an independent contractor, he's got a shovel. No, he's my employee. So they're committing payroll fraud in our city and work.
Okay. I get what you're saying. Okay, you want to?
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I can say is that traditionally, when we put out contract, we have a standard set of specifications. There are special provisions within those specifications that always say, you need to follow local, state, and federal laws. Now, so that's part of our standard specification. When it comes down to whether a subcontractor or a subs, a general contractor is classifying an individual as an independent contractor, I'm not sure I have the ability to answer that particular question. We always anticipate that if a, if a general contractor has employees looking for them, they are considered as employees and they're paying their work comp, insurance, all those types of things.
There's a state law that prevents it.
That's why I say, that's why I say, we, we ask contractors in the specification, you need to follow local, state, and federal laws.
I have a question here.
Hi, my name's John Dixon and I, maybe a two-part question on unimproved streets, your proposed bond issue. Would any of that be used to, to build up the unimproved streets to?
Yes.
City standards?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, like, you know, I'm caught between a rock and a hard place. 2016, I took out a petition, could only get RMD or SID? Yes. To improve my street. I could only get two other people to sign on with me, and it comes back to cost. I tried to explain to them, they still, even with a 20-year increase, they still don't, or cannot afford to do it there in south Omaha, east Omaha, north Omaha. So is there any other, I guess, any other suggestions that could help somebody's mind situation out?
We, we changed that, that in certain areas, certain demographics, we will be 100 correct.
Equalized, equalized.
Yeah, so there's, the policy that was developed, a couple things. One is that if you're doing a street improvement, which is a concrete street, there's a 50% cost that's associated with that.
Right, I understand.
Okay, if you're doing a road maintenance, there's 25. For our locations.
It used to be 25% and dropped it down to, for asphalt, dropped it back down to 20. Now, some in the past have had that.
When the city council waived it, it was, it was 50%. The new policy establishes 50 and 25. But there are provisions within the policy that says that if you live in locations that would be considered as poverty census tracts, there's the ability for 100% of that cost to be covered under the policy as it is today. Not knowing where you live, but if it falls under one of those poverty census tracts, there are provisions within there.
Where would I find that out?
Gary?
It's on the website, it's no far as.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll make sure you get where you find that out. Another thing we did, we do have is, is you can pull up on the website, you can just put your address in, and it's on our website and your website, the Pazer rating?
It's on the G I S.
It's on the G I S website. You could put your address in and it will go to your street and it will tell you what your Pazer rating is, which is a rating from 0 to 1 to 10. And it will tell you what your options are. So it might say, you, you live on a street, your street Pazer rating 10, it's in great shape, the city continues to maintain it. Then they might say yours is one, and they might say it's beyond its serviceable life, and here is your options. So we have that available for people now to see what basically their, the condition of their street is and what their options are. So like if it's a Pazer rating of one, it's, it's deteriorated, and we would say, your options are RMD, SID, here's the options, here's how you get started, here's what you do. So we do have that information available now too. Other questions? Yes? Troy, oh, Troy's got the mic there.
Matt Scott, would you be willing, my friend here was talking about the misclassification, I think something he didn't quite get to, is would you be willing to put certified payroll language in your contracts to stop these contractors from misclassifying employees?
Well, I, yeah, I don't develop the contracts, I'm, I'm going to. Is that a law department issue? I'm not su, I, I don't, I guess I can't answer that for you, but I could, I could get you an answer. Because that, that would be through the, our law department with how they develop the contracts. Okay?
Janet Monet, South Omaha community activist and now vice president of both Sona and the Spring Lake Neighborhood Association. I want to say first of all, you're the first mayor that has done presentations that are understandable and cover the material appropriately.
Thank you.
I came here with 20 questions. I only have one left.
Oh, good. Guys, I feel good about that, isn't it? But this is, this is probably going to be the one that will stump me.
In our neighborhood, this is an individual thing, but in our neighborhood and other neighborhoods where there's an increase of heavy vehicle traffic, for either projects like C S O or new construction, or an increase in livestock, livestock trucks that are heavier, the new freight trucks that are extra long, they're knocking over our light posts, they're chopping up our curbs. What kind of dollar recuperation do you get from those kinds of entities that are using our streets? Because I don't think I should have to pay for their profit.
Weight limits, trucks. That's a tough one.
Well, because I think our, our vehicle user fee, if you have a car, it's 50 bucks, if you have a pickup, it's 50 bucks, but I believe if it gets higher and you have a registered vehicle, then you're going to pay more. Now granted, there's probably some trucks that are coming into the Omaha area that are not plated within the city limits of Omaha, and therefore they're probably not paying that particular fee. But there is a.
But there's a weight limit on, on the trucks.
Yeah, there's a weight limit on vehicles also.
Residential.
What was that?
Six tons residential.
Uh huh.
And it does go up to $175 a foot.
So the wheel tax goes up to 175?
And for T V D, N U D, and the soar project, all pays city some reimbursement to go for infrastructure.
Did you, did you hear what he's saying? He's saying like with the, if it's associated with the C S O project, like with Spring Lake, then they pay for?
They pay us a in lieu amount that's to replicate taxes. T V D pays it, community pays it, and the soar, the whole soar project pays it, in addition to the, you know, tax going on the floor.
And who's responsible for enforcing the, the weight limit and the size limit on the vehicles? Because when we get a, a truck that's got an extended trailer, which has got three wheels on each end of it, plus the heavy tractor, and it's pulling through a neighborhood street, and it's not just once in a while that it happens when there's a traffic jam on the interstate, but I think there has to be a way to protect our streets, and that may be part of the preventative that Immer was talking about, to be able to prevent the destruction in the first place. It's, there's a lot of abuse in my neighborhood, you know, of oversized trucks and these huge, absolutely huge dump trucks that are empty. Somebody needs to be able to, I mean, who do I report that to?
You report to carrier enforcement. So the Nebraska State Patrol's Carrier Enforcement Division handles that. The rule on that is if you have a destination within the neighborhood or within an area, you're allowed to go there even if it's not a truck ground. The example I like to give is a Mayflower moving van. They can drive an 18-wheel semi right into the middle of the neighborhood, load your stuff in and drive it back out. That's perfectly legal. If they're taking a shortcut through your neighborhood, that is illegal, and Carrier Enforcement is who handles that. And it does happen sometimes, in a short-term example like you gave, there's an accident someplace and they start to cut through the neighborhood. That's very difficult because you have to get the enforcement people out there quickly and catch them. But if they're doing it on a regular basis, I get calls all the time, and I'll take the information, call Carrier Enforcement or, or give the number to, to the folks. But that's suggested.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
It's all answered.
Hey, good job. My name is Richard Bolms. I want to give kudos to your street maintenance, you guys did a great job on Y. Now you got to come around the corner and give my time. But I was wondering if I could put oil down to knock down the dust on the road? I have outholes 12 months a year. It's a dirt road, it's worse for D, and I was wondering if there's something we could It's a dirt road, more sporty, and I was wondering if there's something we could put on it to just keep it from kicking up the dust? For oil dirt, you guys to do, and you guys come out four or five times a year.
And grate them down.
And grate them. You could save money by just oiling it or something, or putting a asphalt on it or something?
That's what I'm saying, Austin's saying, that's an interesting question. Do you have an answer? Oh. You can't? No, they're saying you can't do it because of environmental quality control.
Oil's all considered.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, it'd be nice to not need dust for four years.
I remember when, I grew up in a little small town outside of St. Louis, and I remembered every summer, they would come and they would spray tar all over the street, and then it was a mess, and then a couple days later, they would come and they would, they would spread rock.
Chip seal.
Is it called chip seal? And then you just had to drive your car up and down it for about a month and it would all get smashed in and then it would be drivable again, but your cars were a mess, and they do that every summer. That's all they did to the streets. I bet you they still do that there, I don't know. Do they do it? And some of the, I'll let you talk, but some of the projects in Omaha too, I want to make sure you know that they are not City of Omaha projects. You know, when builders are doing a development, example is all the work that was at 144th and Pacific last fall, and that was for the big applied underwriter project there in the Boystown area. That wasn't the city doing that work in that intersection. I know I got a lot of calls, people yelling when school started, that they were still working on that intersection right by Millard North. Maple Street is another example, from 108 to 204th. That's a two-year project, a multi-million dollar, two-year project on Maple, if you ever traveled that, that's being done by the Nebraska Department of Transportation, it's not a City of Omaha project. So they're not all Omaha projects, but I want to stress, we have a short construction season here and we start working on our roads the minute the last snowflake is gone, and we work on them until December 31st, weather permitting. Sometimes we have a lot of luck and we get a lot done, sometimes we get a lot of rain, but all those projects are weather permitting.
All right, so a little question.
Sure.
If I'm going to be in trouble, because I need to take care of the outlet, the access room where I live, that's my back driveway, because I put rock on it to stabilize the dirt and everything, and is my, within the city?
I don't think you're, I don't think you're going to get in trouble. What is it? Do you have a comment? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, why don't you give us your address? We can talk, yeah.
No, but I do it so because I have to stabilize the dirt. We didn't want to, it drops right on with the road.
Yeah.
You got thumbs up.
Yeah, thumbs up.
Do thumbs up.
Grady Schneider, what are we doing with, I see more and more bicyclists. Now, we have a bicycle lane around the streets, we have bicycle trails. Are we taxing these riders? Or we, there's another street revenue right there.
Bike, right now, bicycles, those that have bicycles on our streets, scooters, they're not, they, there's not, there's not a tax for that. But you know what, let me, let me mention bicycles and scooters, because in some of our last town hall meetings, people said, well, you're just talking about roads, what about, what about bike lanes? What about scooters? What about alternate forms of transportation? What about public transportation? That's all part of our transportation plan, but the roads are fundamental to everything else. You're not going to put a bike lane on a road full of potholes. You've got to get the roads fixed first. The buses don't want to go up and down a road that's full of potholes. So yeah, we are looking at all of those other transportation needs, but the road surface itself is fundamental to everything else, and that's why we got to address it first. Or along with, it's not first, it's not, it's, that's, that's the important part before we can do these other things. Other questions?
We have about 10 minutes left.
Steve Walkman, I was curious about the figures you gave, asphalt versus concrete cost, 10 times more for concrete. Curious what went into that? Are you comparing apples to apples? Is it, are we comparing it to an overall rate to a full-depth concrete replacement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a fair comparison?
Yeah, it's, it's what we do per lane mile, with asphalt and with concrete.
Yeah, because part of the problem you run into is that if you're not properly maintaining that section of roadway, you don't have enough funds to be able to do it, it's going to deteriorate. And if it deteriorates, the potential is, you could be doing a complete reconstruction of that particular roadway. And so asphalt surfacing, you're trying to maintain the integrity of the system or the street that's there today, because it already has curbs on it, it's already got gutters, it's already got storm sewers, and so you want to protect that particular base, and that's part of the reason why that a surface is put on there is to allow for waters not to penetrate down into it, and that's part of the reason why that we want to do that. The one and a half million per 20 miles is kind of a number that we use relative to a complete reconstruction. So it could include restabilizing the base, it could include repairing storm sewers that are already there that are underneath the roadway. So it is a pretty significant cost when you look at reconstructing.
And some of our streets, let me give you an example, 168th Street, that is one that is, do you ever drive 168? Like from Pacific down to Q Street? I mean, that is one street that has been in the works for years. We're going to start working on it finally, next year, but that's, that's going to be a total reconstruction. That's going to, it'll be widened, it'll have medians, it'll have curbs, it'll have storm drain, so that's a huge project. And it's going to be two different bids, I believe. I think it goes from Pacific to center and then center on down to Q Street. Two different, but that's a big, big project, but it has to be done.
Tom, just look up the road there. I appreciate the job you're doing, education's really important. Since we got five minutes, I got five minutes worth of questions.
Oh, boy.
Appreciate the snowplow, something in the winter time, the raindrops running around. That's, that was very good.
That are live snowplowed, where you could see where they're at and where they're, the dots, that was something Austin worked, all these guys worked on that really hard so people could see.
I decided whether I do my house in.
Yeah, yeah.
Street maintenance is a very important thing. I sent a message to Benny one day when things were getting duked out at the city council, but it never showed up. But I take a look at where the water enters in between the panels, and it seems like they need to waterproof those, and that would prevent a lot of the panel damage, and we got a lot of our potholes are right there where the joints are. So if we can get ahead of that sometime around here, I think we'd be slowing this thing down an awful lot. The other thing I kind of noticed, it seems like we've got an awful lot of out-of-town plates. You know, we have the rain of terror back there out on Underdop or something, and try to get people to come in and try to register their cars and pay their wheel tax. I don't know if you can use the public services like the police to kind of go through apartments at it in the evening and take a sampling and see if it's worth bringing up that issue to the public again, you know, I don't know.
Then it's the police that, as far as expired license plates or out-of-town license plates. They used to have, I know they used to have like a team that would go into apartment complexes and look at the plates. I don't, I think it's just a matter of resources. They don't do that anymore, do they carry it all?
I think it's all part of the nuisance team.
The nuisance team?
Yeah, the police nuisance team.
Okay.
Put some abandoned vehicles, unregistered vehicles.
So, so I mean, if anybody notices an issue like apartment complex that with a lot of out-of-state plates, they could be reported.
Yeah, I sent a message to your office here like last week or something like that, and then the gal came back real quick. If it's anybody specific you're talking about, no, I'm not, I'm just talking about a global approach. Because looking at the taxes of all the states around us, ours is the highest. So they're going to go to these other states to, you know, register their cars, you know, a lot cheaper. So anyway, thank you.
About the cracks, do you want to mention anything about the cracks in the roads? We do do some crack sealing.
And we have it out here.
Crack sealing?
Yeah. We do crack sealing, it's about a million dollars a year.
So a million and a half feet?
Yeah.
We also have to do joint sealing.
So we did recognize that, we had a systems study done about 10 years ago or so now, and that was one of the changes that had those results. Because you're exactly right, we keep that water out of there, it does protect the joints and it does let our infrastructure pass out of it, and that would be part of what we're talking about today, to enhance that.
If you look at that 168th Street that I just mentioned, there's, there's huge cracks right down the center line, all around, that, that road is just shot. So you can see that, that's one of the big problems. It's just going to, it's going to blow up again next winter if there's a bad winter. And then I'm going to be calling Austin like every morning.
Yep, and we are almost right at the 12:30, so we have time for about two.
This is just a quick comment, Janet Monet again. Potholes cause accidents. Accidents cause property damage and personal damage, injury. I think there ought to be a way for us to work with the entities that are involved in public safety, for our health and safety. If there weren't some grants out there, I don't know what we might be able to go for, but because of the necessity that rapid growth that Omaha is playing through right now, the population shifts in this whole country, as things change, people are moving to where it's more cost-effective to live, and Nebraska's one of those places in spite of our taxes. So maybe that's an avenue, it's just an idea to throw out there, but insurance companies, health and human service agencies, federal dollars that might be out there, or foundations that will sponsor that for the sake of healthier streets mean healthier people.
Thank you.
We're going to have time for one more, anybody? Okay.
I have a question before you leave, I want to, I want to ask for everybody for just a quick question.
I was a little concerned about the fact that we're getting so many floods and it's doing, you know, major disastrous things to the planet, like washing away whole cities and, you know.
Whole roads.
Roads, exactly, and bridges. And what I'm concerned about is that we build all this stuff and then it gets washed away, and we're not going to be able to afford to keep replacing all that.
Well, I, I know what you're saying, but the flood is an act of God, we, there's no control over it, and if you look at some of those roads out in Western Nebraska, you'll know why the Department of Transportation is so busy right now. Some of those roads just overflow. So, does the state Nebraska? Well?
They're putting a project.
They, yeah, they, there is no, I just met with the director of the Department of Transportation yesterday morning. They are putting some of their other projects on the back burner right now, the state is, to get those major roads that need to be usable repaired, so. So I want to ask you a question, so what, and this is totally unscientific, but, and obviously, you could change your mind anytime, but just based on what I said today and the information that you have today, if we were to put a bond issue on the ballot and you know you would have to pay about $34 more a year to pay the debt, it would be paid off in 20 years, would you vote yes? Just to show a hands.
Very solid.
Just, yeah, and just, this is just informal, but who would say absolutely no?
I wouldn't have for this meeting.
Okay, well, that's good, that, good, good. I want to make sure you know that, again, that we videotape this and it will be posted online in a week or so. The PowerPoint is already online, if you want to go back and refer to it, you can do that. I really appreciate you being here today. If you have further questions, you can always email us, we'll give you the answers.